This conference will now be recorded.
Somebody from your family that works at CTO?
My wife is the commission, a commission. Jane Van Dyke.
Oh.
She's my wife.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's funny. Usually comes as a surprise with the different last names.
Are you guys ready?
Yes.
Alex, can you start the recording? All the stuff that was in? Good afternoon. Today is Wednesday, May 24th, 2023, and I'd like to call today's work session to order. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Here.
Councilmember Boyle?
Present.
Oh, boy.
Councilmember Servini?
Absent and excused.
Mayor Strobin?
Present.
All right, tonight's presentation, Mr. Ethan Spoo will present the first look at the manufactured homes code update and family daycare code update. Mr. Spoo?
Good evening. So tonight, as the mayor mentioned, we're going to preview for you two code updates that we've been working on with the planning commission over the past several months. Before I get started, I just want to mention that another planner, Alec Eggerola, is on the line listening in with WSP, and he's been helping out with this project quite a bit as well. Alec won't be speaking tonight, but just listening in. So before I talk to you about the two code updates, I just wanted to also talk with you a little bit about the city's comprehensive plan update. You might remember that I spoke to you back in February about the plan update. You can go to the next slide. And so, just as a quick reminder, the city is obligated to update its comprehensive plan by June of 2025. And so we're making progress on that, including these couple of updates that we're working on here tonight. And it's, it's an important update for a number of different reasons, but some of those reasons are that the city has to plan for the next 20 years of growth from the period 2025 to 2045. And the update will look at the type and the density of housing in La Center, how land, how land uses are organized in La Center, and whether or not La Center needs to expand its urban growth boundary in coordination with Clark County. You may have read in the news here recently, beginning of May, that Clark, the Clark County Council selected a population projection for the county as a whole. That projection that they selected was 718,154 people by 2045. And that projection was slightly above the Washington Office of Financial Management middle projection, which you can see there in that graph is kind of that red dashed line. So they selected a projection that was about 20,000 people for the whole county above, above that red line for 2045. And so what that means is that La Center and all the cities in the county, as well as the rural areas, will need to accommodate, to plan to accommodate at least a few more people. And the planning that goes along with that includes looking at what public infrastructure is, is necessary to serve those areas. And so part of the comprehensive plan update is working on these code updates, and there's 12 different code updates that we'll be working on before 2025. These are the first two, you know, so we're making progress, but there is a long road ahead. And so we had a planning commission public hearing on these first two code updates on May 9th. And then we're anticipating a city council public hearing for these on June 28th. So again, these are, this is just kind of your first opportunity to take a, take a look at these. Then we'll, and we've already started moving into talking with the planning commission about critical areas protections. So that's the next code update that we're working on, and there's a whole list of other things, topics there in front of you that we're going to be working on. A lot of those are housing-related code updates. Next slide. Are there any questions on that before I jump into the code updates? Okay. So for the family daycares providers code update, the city is obligated to update its code under state requirements. You can go ahead with the next slide. And as I, as I just mentioned, that would be by June 30, 2025. And so really, the purpose of this code update is just that, to bring the city's code into compliance with the Growth Management Act that, that requires the city to allow family daycare providers in residential dwellings. In case you're wondering what a family daycare provider is, the city's code currently does not address family daycare providers. It does address daycare, daycare uses more generally. But a family daycare provider is a childcare provider who regularly provides early childhood education and early learning services for not more than 12 children at any given time in the provider's home and their, and their living quarters. So that's what the definition of a family daycare provider is. So it's really somebody that's providing that service out of their home. So there's a couple of code requirements that go along with, sorry, a couple of state requirements that go along with updating your code to be compliant with, for family daycares. Cities must allow family daycare providers in all residential dwellings in residential and commercial zones. So the city can't prohibit these uses in residential and commercial zones, in residential dwellings. And then there's a limited number of things that the city can regulate. It can require that these uses comply with building, fire, safety, and health codes. It can require that they conform to lot and building dimensions of the zone that they're located in. Can require that they provide a passenger loading area, that they provide signage that meets local code standards, that they limit hours of operation, and that they require proof of written notification to immediately adjoining property owners. So those are really the only things that the city has the authority to require family daycare providers to do. And then-
Is, I got a question with that. So are they required to participate in any sort of like impact fees? I mean, there's definitely, you know, if you have a business within your home, you're going to have traffic impact and whatnot.
Yeah, they can, I mean, it's operated out of a home, so the rates are going to be charged like their impact fees for a residence. And then, even though this is a little bit stating, restating what has already been said, the city can still impose zoning conditions on those, those providers, but they have to be, but they cannot be more restrictive than those conditions imposed on any other residential dwelling in that, in that same zone. So the changes that we're making to the code, we're updating, yeah, go ahead.
And maybe you're going to get to it, but can housing, or not housing, but homeowners associations be more restrictive?
Yeah, I think they can be. So the state laws limitations on the city authority, but housing, homeowners associations still have their CCNR authorities, and I don't think that these take away the authority to have a covenant that restricts use.
Thank you. So the code changes that we're making, then, we're updating the definitions of family daycare providers to be consistent with that definition. I showed you earlier, as well as the definition of daycare centers. And we're updating the city's residential and commercial zones, specifically the low density residential 7.5 zone, the medium density residential 16 zone, the mixed use zone, the residential professional zone, the commercial zones, which are primarily located in downtown, and then the junction plan district. All of those zones would be updated to allow family daycare providers in those zones. And so, as I mentioned, there's a limited number of things that the city can regulate for these. And so those are on the screen there in front of you that reflect the state requirements. And we've, we've, you know, made those updates in the, in the draft code that's attached to the agenda packet in front of you tonight. And those are meeting applicable state licensing requirements, obtaining a city business license prior to operation, providing the passenger loading area, complying with setbacks, lot coverage, impervious surface, and building dimensions of the zone, complying with building, fire, safety, and health code requirements, providing parking consistent with what you would have to provide for residential dwelling. I've mentioned the notification requirement, providing notification to the immediately adjoining properties. And then the, we, the planning commission is recommending a limitation on hours of operation from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So in case you're a little bit more of a visual person, this table kind of summarizes what we've done with the different zones. And so you have the list of zone, the city zones there on the left-hand side. And so anywhere in red, we're updating that to allow for, to allow for family daycares in those first couple of columns. And then for daycare centers specifically in the MBR 16 zone, those uses aren't mentioned, but those are being made a conditional use. So the recommendations that planning commission had for council, they're recommending that you approve this. Of course, that's not tonight because this isn't the public hearing. But they recommended that city council approve the code update with a couple of changes. They wanted to, a little more specifics on that notification requirement, and specifically that there had to be proof that the daycare provider, the family daycare provider, provided notice to the adjoining property owners by certified mail, and that would be the proof that they would provide to the city to show that they did that. And then the city's existing code mentions the term nursery schools. It's a little bit unclear what that means or what the relationship of that is to daycares or family daycares. They're, you know, these terms are kind of overlapping and, and confusing. And so we're eliminating that term nursery schools from the code because it's also not defined by the state. And so, you know, thereby sort of eliminating, hopefully eliminating any confusion or overlap. That doesn't mean somebody couldn't call themselves a nursery school. They, they would just come to the city and then either apply to be a family daycare or a daycare center, and then they could put up signage calling themselves a nursery school if that's what they, if that's what they want to do. So those are the updates. I'll go ahead and pause here for any questions that you might have before moving on to the next topic.
Two questions. Do you know what the, I'd like to know a little bit more about the 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM hours. What was, how, how did they come up with that recommendation?
So if you look at the Growth Management Act, and this is in 36 dot 70A, I think it's in 450, it talks about the city having the ability to regulate hours of operation, but it kind of sets two bounds on that. It says that the city needs to consider people who don't work standard hours. So you want to have some hours outside of kind of the eight to five or the nine to five where people can drop off and pick up their kids. But you also want to be sure that you're considering the neighborhood and compatibility. So you know, you're not, it's not 10, 11, midnight, whatever. So that was just kind of a, what the planning commission saw as a reasonable hour limitation. It wasn't any particular magic to it, but that seemed to provide the flexibility for people who might work a little bit earlier to come drop off, and then for people who work later to come pick up their kids.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question is the written notification that seems like that might be a burden on not only the, the post office, but also the neighborhood, since they only deliver at certain times of the day, and a lot of times that's when people aren't home. So I would wonder if, if that's the way that, that they want to be notified, what's the percentage? I mean, if they have to have 100% compliance, I don't know that that would work.
Yeah. Each time we talk about this, people bring up aspects of this that we haven't thought of before. So appreciate you bringing that up. So I think that's something that the planning commission, as I said, was trying to figure out a way to have, so that the provider could demonstrate that they've made this notification without somebody just coming to the city and say, hey, I did this, and they, they really did enter something. So-
Can I, is that notification just like stating like, hi, I'm opening up a local in-home childcare? Or is this, do you have a problem with this? And then they get to vote? Is it like that? Or they're just letting them know I'm opening up this business?
They're basically just letting them know.
Okay, so then obviously if that person has the neighbor's concerns, then they would come to council and speak their concerns if they felt like it was a burden on the, on that area.
They could, they, the person who has the concern could contact the city. They could come to the city council meeting and talk in the public comment period, although, I mean, this is not a discretionary approval process. The city can only, if, if the provider's meeting these requirements and the city has, is obligated to approve, approve it, so.
Right, I understand. And who makes, who, or are you going to get to this in the subsequent slides about that list that you said the city can enforce? What you or La Center plans to, or is that something we create? As far as the fire regulations and the, all of that, that list of hours and, you know, you had back a few slides, the list that you said that the city has, the things they can impose. What are we going to impose? Have you figured that out, or do we create that?
Yeah.
Right, but what, is that what you plan on this one?
Yeah, so this is, this is how we plan to impose regulations that we can in the draft code.
Oh, okay, sorry, I did not see that. It's really hard to read without red.
Yeah, sorry, that's smaller than-
Yeah, I, yeah, I probably was like, okay, got it. So does that also fall under getting a, like comprehensive plan? Is that the same thing of all of these things, basically?
So they would just have to work with DCYF to be a, become a licensed family daycare home. Really, it's, it's DCYF that has most of the, you know, the hoops to jump through. So with us, again, they just have to get that state license that I just mentioned, business license, work with DCYF on the passenger loading area, all the setbacks and fire code, and all that would just be a standard residential-
Okay.
Fire code setbacks, all that sort of stuff. So it's, it's basically just like a house.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you for explaining that, Brian.
Mm-hmm.
I was just wondering how many extra hoops on top of the residential would they have to go through? That's what I was curious, and how much we were imposing on them for that.
Any other questions? All right, yeah, go on, go ahead. All right, so the, the second one is the manufactured homes code update. You know, and similar to the family daycares code update, it's another requirement that the city's meeting and updating its code in compliance with state law. So for this one, it's a slightly different flavor than family daycares. The city has to treat manufactured homes the same as, as site-built housing or housing built to any other state or local standard. And so if somebody wants to place a manufactured home on an individual lot after this code is adopted, then they'll be able to, then they'll be able to do that, and that's the intent of this. This is not, this code update doesn't address in particular manufactured home communities or subdivisions. We're talking about individual homes on individual lots. Similar to family daycares, though, there's like a relatively small list of things that the city can require of these manufactured homes that are placed on individual lots. It can require that the manufactured home be new, and that it's set up on a foundation, and that the space below the foundation is covered. And then it can require that the manufactured home is compliant with local design standards, that it meets the state energy code, and that it is a designated manufactured home, and I'll explain what that is here in a second. So the term designated manufactured home is a manufactured home that is constructed after June 15, 1976. That's the date that, that the federal government adopted construction and safety standards for manufactured homes. Before that date, they were built to a different standard. And so if you picture what you think of as a mobile home, or some people call a trailer, those are usually built before that date in 1976 and, and are subject to those new construction, newer construction and safety standards that were put in place in 1976. And so designated also means that it would be two fully enclosed parallel sections, 12 feet wide by 36 feet long, and that it have wood shake or shingle composition roof, roof with a three to 12 pitch, and then siding that's similar to that used for site-built single-family residences. So those are really kind of the only things that the city can regulate and require of these manufactured homes. And then, even though it sounds kind of obvious, a new manufactured home is one that doesn't, hasn't had a title assigned to it before, and it's not a used mobile home. So the city can require those two things, and the planning commission is recommending to you a code that would require that any manufactured home placed in La Center is both new and designated, so meets all of those requirements. So in addition to those requirements for placement of an individual manufactured home, the city can also not, cannot restrict the location of a manufactured home in a manufactured home community. If that manufactured home community legally existed before June 12, 2008, and, and the city then could not restrict the placement of a manufactured home just for reasons that it did not meet setback or separation requirements, but it could restrict placement within a community if it didn't meet fire safety or other local ordinances or state laws. Go ahead. The city also can't prevent the entry or require the removal of a recreational vehicle in a manufactured home community, and that includes a tiny house because, which are also called park model RVs, because those are defined as a recreational vehicle. And so this specific code, the specific statute in state law, 35A dot 21312, says that the city can't prevent an RV from locating in, in those communities. And as with family daycares, you know, so if you had the question about legally recorded covenants, that same thing is true here, that this code update wouldn't override those, those legally recorded covenants. So if a neighborhood in La Center restricts the placement of manufactured homes, then through its covenants, then this code would not override that or affect that. So in terms of the changes that we're proposing to the code, we're updating a host of definitions. We're updating the definition of modular home, which is different than, which is different than a manufactured home. We're updating the definition of RV, which, as I said, includes the term park model in it. We're also including the definition of park model. And we're adding definitions of manufactured home community and manufactured home subdivision. So this table again is sort of comparing what's going on with this code update in the cities, across the city's different zones. And so if you look at kind of those first couple of columns there that talk about manufactured homes, most of those zones from downtown, from the line that says downtown commercial C1 on downs, manufactured homes would be specifically prohibited in those zones. And if that seems a little bit strange to you, remember that the requirement here isn't to always allow manufactured homes. It's only to treat them equally as site-built housing. And because site-built housing, new site-built housing is prohibited, already prohibited in those zones, then we're proposing to prohibit manufactured homes in those zones as well. So that would apply to, excuse me, the downtown commercial zones and the junction plan area. Manufactured homes are already allowed in the low-density residential district. And then, and then in medium density, they're not specifically mentioned, but they would be allowed because site-built housing is allowed in the medium-density district. And then, as I said, this, the primary reason for this code update is not to talk about manufactured home communities or subdivisions, but there's some sort of tentacles of this update that are touching on communities and subdivisions. And so in most cases, we're updating the zones to prohibit manufactured home communities and subdivisions. The exception to that are, we're keeping them a conditional use in low-density residential, and they're changing from a permitted use to a conditional use in medium-density residential. And then mobile homes, which, as I said, are kind of those older style manufactured homes, I guess, if you will, that were built prior to 1976, would be prohibited citywide under this code update.
Real quick, Ethan, can you explain how any of this would be affected by the subarea plan that's going to be taking place in the two areas that have been chosen?
So the subarea plan is just kicking off, and so we don't know exactly what is going to be part of that subarea plan. That's going to affect downtown, but also Timman Landing. And so depending upon what regulations we come up with in the subarea plans, policies and regulations we come up with, they will have to comply with this. So if site-built housing is allowed after, as part of those subarea plan updates, then manufactured housing will also have to be allowed. Okay, so really then what we're doing is we're updating the zoning chapters to allow manufactured homes where site-built housing, site-built, single-family housing is allowed, and we're prohibiting manufactured homes where site-built, single-family housing is already prohibited. So that's kind of the real quick summary statement of all of that. And then for accessory dwelling units, which, remember, are kind of those backyard dwelling units, grandmother flats and so forth, there's a specific prohibition right now in the city's code on manufactured homes serving as an ADU. But we're updating that to, to allow manufactured homes as an ADU. And the reason is that because ADUs are a type of site-built housing, so comply with the state law, you have to allow, also have to allow manufactured housing. Now, if you remember back to what I said about the manufactured home has to be new and designated, one of the requirements of designated is that it has to be two parallel, you know, basically a double-wide, two parallel sections, 12 feet wide by 36 feet long. So there's not very many places, yards, that are going to be able to fit a double-wide in the- There's not very many places, yards, that are going to be able to fit a double-wide in the back of their yard. So that's
They'll figure it out.
Going to limit, in most cases, placement of these. And then they would still have to comply with setbacks, right? That would also apply for an ADU. So there might be some practical limitations in a lot of cases.
And Ethan, in our ADU code, there's also, they can only be a percentage of the parent, for lack of a better term, house. So it'd have to be a very large lot with a very large house on it to be able to fit one of these as an ADU.
Okay, exactly.
Would the same, would the same regulations still apply to the tiny homes or the recreational vehicles?
So the tiny homes and the recreational vehicles, the requirement there is that the city can't prohibit the placement of those in a manufactured home community. But this code update wouldn't allow a tiny home or an RV to be placed on an individual.
As a, as an accessory?
Correct.
Okay.
Only in a community.
And really, there wouldn't be any change. People store their RVs on their lots now behind the gate. This doesn't change that regulation.
Thank you. So there's a lot of text on this slide, I apologize for that. But basically what the gist of this is that if you look at the city's existing medium-density residential 16 code, there are some specific manufactured home design and siding standards in that. And so if you were going to propose to place manufactured homes, or, excuse me, if you were going to propose to do a manufactured home subdivision in the MDR 16 zone, there's a bunch of design requirements that you have to comply with. For instance, roofing and additional architectural detail requirements, rain protection, requirements for the surfaces of those homes, and then a requirement for an HOA and pedestrian and trail linkages in that manufactured home subdivision. So since you're going to be able to still establish a manufactured home subdivision in either the low-density residential district or the medium-density residential district, we're taking those regulations that are only in the medium-density district right now, and we're putting them in a more general section of the city's code so that they'll apply to both of those districts, not just medium-density. So that's really pretty much all this, most of this slide is saying. And then the parking requirement for manufactured homes would be the same as for a single-family home, so two per unit. And then if you're going to establish a manufactured home community or subdivision, you not only have to provide the two per unit, but you have to provide one guest space per five units, which is the same as you would provide for multifamily housing. And then, as I mentioned earlier, mobile homes would be prohibited citywide under this code update. I won't go into these in too much depth, but the changes that we're proposing here will reflect the state requirements about exactly what can be regulated for an individual manufactured home, that it be new and designated, that it meet federal standards, has a foundation and is covered around the bottom, has to comply with zoning requirements, has to meet the energy code. And then if you're going to move a manufactured home into the community, you have to comply with the requirements of the Public Works Director and Police Chief for moving that home in to the city. And as I mentioned, again, I won't go into these too much either. These are just reflecting the state requirements that I mentioned to you earlier. The city can't prohibit the placement of a manufactured home in a manufactured home community, and that includes RVs. So for this one, the planning commission again is recommending that the city council approve it. And they had a couple of minor changes that go along with this. We had a stray occurrence of mobile homes, so we're going to be striking that from the code. And then in the city's temporary needs housing code section, which is 18270, that's also called the medical hardship housing. You may have heard of, allow somebody to place like an RV or manufactured home on their site on a temporary basis for basically a couple of years, like they might have a sick relative or something like that, to allow them to care for that relative. And so we're, we were proposing an update to that code. And because of the way we were requiring that manufactured homes be designated, which is the double-wide manufactured home, that would have affected this code section and required that the temporary need housing be also be double-wide. We didn't think that that was right, so we changed that. And so now it's only going to be a single-wide in those cases for temporary needs housing.
Can those temporary housing things be renewed?
My memory's failing me on that. I think they're limited for a period of about three to five years or so. I don't know, Bronson, if you remember that. Now, I guess that would be a code enforcement issue. So if somebody made a complaint, then the city would have to look into that.
So they can be there for way longer.
I think the city's only had one of those. And they used it for the period of time they needed it, and then they wrapped it up.
Right, so when someone applies for something like that, we have that on record. And then we can actually be alerted when that's coming up to that due date so that we can approach the person and
Okay, so there is follow-through at the end of the contract. Yeah, that makes sense. Because I mean, to move a single-wide, I mean, that still takes some time. That's not just an RV. Yeah, that takes planning and, yeah, prepare.
Any other questions?
And just a reminder, this is first look, so these will come back. We're not going to, the next council meeting on the 14th is pretty busy, so we're going to actually bring this back on the 28th of June for a public hearing. But if there's any other comments, items that the council would like to see addressed, changed, whatever, now you get time to raise those so that we can make those changes and reflect those when we come back to you with the draft code for public hearing and council's adoption consideration.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Ethan, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and close this work session, and we will start our city council meeting at 6:30. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. Today is Wednesday, May 24, 2023, and I'd like to call today's city council meeting to order. If it could please stand to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Thank you. Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Councilmember Casper?
Here.
Councilmember Boyle?
Present.
Councilmember Servini?
Absent, excused.
Mayor Strobin?
Present.
Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be removed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Clark County Fire Rescue lease for the old City Hall building, we're going to move that to the next meeting. We were still waiting for final approval from their attorneys, and that didn't come this afternoon.
So Bronson, do you need us to say anything about that being removed?
No.
Thank you. For the remaining consent agenda items, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passed, thank you, council. Tonight, we do have some presentations and proclamations. First up will be Commission on Aging Annual Update. Please welcome Mr. Franklin Johnson, Commission on Aging Vice Chair and Ms. Jenna K. They will be providing an annual update on the Commission on Aging.
First of all, thank you for making time in your busy schedule to allow us to make this presentation and give you this brief annual update. So thank you for that. My name is Franklin Johnson from the city of Vancouver and Vice Chair in the Clark County Commission on Aging. We're going to start with some background information, and we're going to make sure that we allow time at the end of our presentation for any discussion or questions that you may have. And between myself and Jenna K., we'll try and resolve all of your questions for you. Next slide, please. Clark County, as everywhere in the country, is experiencing a dramatic increase in its citizens that are over 60 years of age. This surge is looking at the fact that we have a significant change coming in how we manage our resources and how we provide services to this population of our community. Okay, I'm sorry, let me speak up a little louder. I don't want to ground anybody out. Okay. Everybody hear me now, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is basically the agenda we're going to cover this evening. Give you a little background, discuss our 2022 work program, and also look at our Aging Readiness Plan and what we've been doing with that. Next slide, please. In 2022, the commission reached two important milestones. It marked the commission's 10-year anniversary in Clark County and signaled that it was time to update the original Aging Readiness Plan, which was originally created in 2012. As we reflected on this significant moment in our history, we decided to focus our work this year on innovation through connection. And what that means is that as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, we found that a lot of seniors were isolated and disconnected from services they normally receive, as well as human contact. Next slide, please. In late 2021 and early 2022, the commission conducted a community member survey, and a copy of that survey is included in the annual report that you should have, starting on page 27. The survey helped commission members solidify the plans for the innovation through connection topic and identify guest speakers that we invited to our monthly meetings and contributed to the end-of-year findings and recommendations. Next slide, please. The commission organized and moderated fireside chat conversations with guest experts listed on this slide by topic to help the group dive deeper into that particular aspect, innovation through connection. And while that Next slide, please. One more slide. Now, that rather possibly confusing diagram shows a very intricate and complex interactions between seniors and all of their network that gives them care. And this includes members of faith, neighbors, family members, who are all unpaid. Next slide, please. Our key findings from that year begin on page 13 in your report. There's too many of those findings to discuss today, but I do want to focus on a few and highlight them. Community service providers pivoted and offered more services during the pandemic and yet continue to experience gaps in their service delivery and in reaching more older adults in their community. There's a high demand for volunteers to help community organizations deepen their connections and offerings to its community members. Unpaid family, friends, faith community members and neighbors are essential to the care of many of the senior and constitute their support network that they depend on. Next slide. While family, friends and faith community members do provide critical caregiving copies, the healthcare system and the community often do not sufficiently take care of the needs of the caregivers. And that can lead to burnout, distress, and even depression. There's a growing demand for professional caregivers with geriatric expertise, and there's still a gap in these resources. Next slide, please. On page 18, you'll find our recommendations that begin in our annual report. In the past years, we've often developed recommendations for council considerations. However, this year, we decided to take a little different approach and directed these recommendations toward ourselves. For instance, we recommended considering the following questions in the Aging Readiness Plan update project. For example, how can the commission and other community organizations better support the area aging agency on aging as the go-to, one-stop shopping center for information and resources? How can the Aging Readiness Plan better address the needs of unpaid family, friend and faith caregivers? And how can the Aging Readiness Plan better address the professional caregiver shortage in the county? Next slide, please. And we're also looking at how can the Aging Readiness Plan better support the community organizations and remove the communication barriers that led to the gaps in service and communication? And especially for those who may not speak English. Next slide, please. We're looking at how the Aging Readiness Plan can support innovative solutions to community organizations that were developed during the pandemic, with a particular focus on revising policies or laws to allow those programs or adaptations to continue, and identification of sustainable funding rather than the temporary emergency funding that we had in the past. And this is a pretty important point here. During the pandemic, we had a lot of things shift. We had shortage of some things, and we had an abundance of other things. But during the aftermath of the pandemic, a lot of those funding sources disappeared. So we're trying to look at a model that provide a more consistent funding model to maintain a consistent level of services for our senior population. Next slide. In 2023, the Commission on Aging will implement intentional, strategic and active communication and community engagement throughout the year. We'll use our role as a convener and a facilitator to move forward the Aging Readiness Plan strategies during the second half of this year. Next slide, please. Is everybody hearing me okay? Beginning on page 23 of our annual report, we describe progress made in the 2022 related to the implementation of the existing Aging Readiness Plan strategies by local jurisdictions such as yours. by local jurisdictions such as yours and community organizations across the county. To highlight a few items in this report, this section of the report, the first shared housing program launched in the county. The county and several cities made progress working to update housing code to remove barriers for creating a wider range of housing options in the unincorporated county. And if I understand correctly, you might have discussed some housing code issues earlier today? For instance, this Vancouver City Council adopted code changes making it easier to build small dwellings like accessory dwelling units and these cottage clusters. I don't know if you're familiar with, if you've seen on the news where they have these small houses in clusters. That's what we're talking about here. The Commission continued its education, awareness, and advocacy work through community presentations such as this one, serving as liaisons with other groups with intersecting work and highlighting existing county programs and learning about programs that exist elsewhere as part of our Commission meetings. And finally, a few years ago, the Commission initiated the Silver Citizen Award to annually recognize an older adult who is having a tremendous impact in the community. This year's recipient is Caitlin Smith, whose picture is up there. And she is just an amazing person. She does volunteer work with, in the community, especially with the fish food pantry, and she provides a wonderful example of the impact that can be made by a single person who's committed to serving their community. Next slide, please. We mentioned that we're working to update our Aging Readiness Plan. The original plan was created in 2012. And given that we're at the ten-year anniversary, we felt it was time to take advantage of the lessons we had learned through COVID and other experiences and address changes that have been made in the city, the county, and so forth as a result of recovering from the COVID-19 pandemic. There is also a significant amount of new information that needs to be incorporated to update and refresh this plan. One of the things that I think is really worth noting is that we looked at what we thought were the issues, but rather than rest on that, we created a survey that we sent out in the community to hear back from the constituents and what their perspective was in what they needed, what was missing, and what they wanted. Next slide, please. This is our project timeline, and it may not make a lot of sense to you, but it gives you a sense of what we've been doing. We dealt with gathering data through our survey, talking to members of specialized service delivery groups, and we looked at how we're going to revise the plan and make it current. We want this to be a living document, not just something you sit on the shelf. Next slide, please. I hope that was not too painful for you. But now we want to leave time for any questions or any discussions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
I just have one question. Like, what were the main services that you were seeing the most lacking come outside of COVID after the pandemic was over?
There were a few, but one of the prime examples, before the pandemic, Meals on Wheels were delivering meals to their clients on a daily basis. And once the COVID conditions were in place, they had to pivot and change how they delivered those services. So sometimes it would be maybe once a week or... And also, by the way, most of the volunteers in these programs are seniors themselves. So when... We're gonna... We're gonna have to salute distinguished members of the audience now.
And I was just about to tell you that the residents in this city are very much involved as community leaders as much as Caitlin that you were shown on that picture. And some of them are sitting in our audience.
And that we thank you for because you're the lifeline, the critical piece that keeps it all working. But there was a shortage of volunteers, and there was also restrictions on people gathering, how they could deliver the meals. And the process of getting the meals every day was a social, a source of social interaction. So isolation became a real impactful dynamic for seniors because they liked human contact. They couldn't gather. A lot of the programs where they could go to community centers and so forth, those were shut down. So a lot of the organizations that delivered these services, Meals on Wheels, Food Pantry and so forth, had to pivot and come up with creative solutions and approaches to maintain the services and the health that these services represented. Is that...
Yeah, no, it's...
Are they back doing it every day now? Or getting back to that? Is that the goal or...?
Well, in some instances, it's kind of a hybrid model now. Okay, and it kind of depends on who those, who those clients are, how many volunteers they have, and that kind of dynamic. But anyone that has some spare time, you're welcome to join the party.
Is this solely funded through private donations or is there federal or local funding available to help?
It depends on the organization. Yeah.
So the Commission on Aging is, it's a county-appointed volunteer commission. So the county supports staff such as myself provide a little bit of time to help the Commission, but otherwise, all Commission members are volunteer and they don't have a budget. So they work through their means of education and advocacy and then sort of partner with a lot of the service providers in the community to help support them and highlight, you know, needs and gaps and things like that.
Is there, has there been any thought given towards trying to use some of the American Recovery Plan Act funds that the county has? I know there's a significant amount sitting there, but...
Yeah, I think the, the hope is that the Commission's encouraging the, the organizations, the community that are actually providing the services themselves to apply for that funding. So again, you know, this group is sort of looking countywide, sort of advisory, but, you know, the Meals on Wheels, the Community in Motion, doing transportation, you know, there's so many, there's, there's a ton of organizations that are actually helping older adults. So the hope would be that that money can go to them to help them do more.
Do you still have a vacancy or has that been filled?
Excuse me, let me just add one quick comment to the question here. In the city of Vancouver, we have what we call the Community Development Block Grant Program. And every year, there are funds partially provided by the federal government that organizations can come and make a presentation and receive funds. There's a selection panel that kind of grades a presentation decide which is the most appropriate services and give those the priority. And I'm not sure what's going on in the rest of the county, but there might be similar programs like that. Excuse me.
Thank you.
The question, if there was, were any openings? So the application period has closed for this year. We are waiting on the county manager to make her decision on filling the current vacant seats on the Commission. But the Commission seats, they're staggered, so every year there are openings. And we usually advertise February, March timeframe. So anyone who's interested in joining the Commission in the future, we definitely encourage anyone who's interested to apply.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions? Thank you again. I do have to say something. I apparently skipped, and I think Casey was over here telling me comments. And I see Skip back there shaking his head yes. My bad. I was in a hurry reading, so I just kind of went off. Did you want comments today or you want to just cancel those, Skip? I will go back to council, our two comments here after we finish one more presentation from Mr. Brian Cass. So Brian, I'm going to go ahead and we'll finish up the presentations and then we'll go back.
Sounds good. I'll be fast. So, good evening, council. This evening, we have a first look at proposed illicit discharge ordinance. Again, this is just a first look, so this is an opportunity to get feedback from the council that we can incorporate into the final draft that will come back before council for adoption and public hearing in the future. So a little bit of background, the city currently has limited or no ability to regulate discharges to the storm sewer system or the MS4 as it's referred to in this ordinance. And the water from the storm sewer system makes its way to surface water, often with little to no treatment. Some areas of the city, newer developments will have storm treatment facilities that take out sediments and oils and the like. But a lot of areas, especially downtown here, where the older buildings don't have any sort of treatment in the water that goes into the drain, goes down into the Lewis River eventually. This contaminated runoff can harm wildlife, it can harm habitat, and those areas that do have treatment facilities like storm ponds, folks are dumping, you know, oils or gas or paint into the storm sewer system. It can actually harm those treatment facilities as well. So really, this ordinance is to, to build in an ability for us to regulate that. So the goals of the new code, really the primary goal is to protect health, safety, and welfare of the community and the environment, to establish regulation of what can and can't be discharged to the storm sewer system, establish a process to inspect, regulate, and enforce non-stormwater discharges, really clarify what is a permitted discharge, what are conditionally permitted discharges, and then what are prohibited discharges. And I just want to note that this code largely follows a model from the Department of Ecology. And I've implemented this code in a couple of other jurisdictions in the county in the past. And I want to note that those jurisdictions either were under or were about to fall under state regulations based on population. When a jurisdiction reaches a 10,000 population threshold, there's some storm requirements that the state imposes that you put in, and this code is one of those. So we have some flexibility that those other jurisdictions didn't, that we can, you know, massage this and adjust this based on council feedback. So I just wanted to point that out before we get in to this too far. So one of the main key elements of this code is this list of prohibited discharges. And this is just a select list, sort of the major ones, and I won't read through them all, but it's, you know, it's trash and debris, it's automotive fluids, gas, antifreeze, et cetera, paints. You know, we've had incidents where folks are washing out their paint wash water and into the storm drain. And again, that goes right to the creeks and streams and wetlands. Solvents, degreasers, pesticides, soap, animal waste, sewage, and recreational vehicle waste. And the next slide kind of hits on that really, you know, it's because of Eddie here discharging his RV into the storm sewer that we're trying to get to the heart of preventing, so...
Hey, Brian, going back one slide to the swimming pool clean wastewater?
Yes.
What, can you define that better? It's not just like draining your swimming pool, is it?
Nope, I will get to that in just a sec. So this would be like if you shock your pool and then you need to drain it or something. There, we'll get to other pool discharges in a second here. Actually, it's right now. So allowed discharges would be surface and groundwater. So if you have a French drain, it's collecting drowned water that can go to the sewer system. Obviously, surface runoff, that's really what the storm sewer is intended for, rains. That rain's supposed to go in the sewer sewer system. Also allowed is condensation from like AC units. Emergency firefighting flows are an allowed discharge. And then conditionally allowed, so getting to your point, Councilman Boyle, dechlorinated potable water for like flushing the water system as well as pool water is an allowed discharge if it's, you know, brought down to a low level of chlorine. Street and sidewalk wash water, goal is to minimize that, but that's allowed discharge conditionally. And then car wash water. The code encourages folks to wash their cars over previous surface like grass if possible. And again, this is one of the more controversial pieces of this code that I, as, as I've implemented in the past, that's come up. And again, we have flexibility that prohibition or conditionally allowed, like encouraging to wash your car over previous surfaces was something that the state required for the codes for jurisdictions that are over that 10,000 population. We don't have to follow that, so if this, you know, it's council's sort of discretion if we want to...
So that's something if like, if we do get over 10,000 people, that would be automatically put into the code?
Yeah, so we'd have to probably come back and update this code. And again, we tried to, in the past, temper this, and this draft version of the code has that, you know, it's, it's more of an education thing. Hey, if you can wash your car in the grass, that way the soap and the debris and everything soaks into the ground instead of going straight into the storm sewer. But again, if that's...
So what's going to be the threshold of me washing my car on my driveway before somebody comes in?
Well, really, all it says is do it if possible. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty...
I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
No, and that's, that's an excellent question. And, you know, again, this, the, I think the goal with, when you have the state requirements, you also have to have a public outreach program. And so you would be educating people like, hey, you know, this is where your water goes. So, you know, we're going to try and do some of that outreach as well, but and education of the public is definitely going to be something that we're implement with this. But understand that, you know, we, we actually want to be encouraging folks to wash their cars. And, you know, it's, it's better to wash your car and then drive, you know, out to Vancouver and, and have to go to a car wash. So, you know, we have some flexibility there. This is the bottom line.
Are you saying, Brian, that there's none of these already listed in the code at all, that list that you just had?
That's right. So really, right now, we just have a garbage dumping ordinance. So it's, I mean, you can kind of try to apply that, you know, and it's, but it's...
I'm surprised, yeah, we haven't had things like this. I mean, I can't imagine. People are ruthless. I mean, they'll just go do whatever they want to do.
Yeah, so, you know, when we've had these instances, and it's not been a whole lot of them, but a handful, you know, and we'll have someone, you know, dumping paint or oil or whatever, or we've had, you know, another one that frequently comes up is folks blowing leaves or lawn clippings into the gutter, and then those go into the storm system, and then that either plugs up the catch basin or then it goes to the storm facility or the...
Right, right, yeah.
That's really kind of why we, when we've run into these, we, we realize that we need some sort of way to better regulate this. And because I was familiar with this sort of approach, having done it twice in the past, we kind of looked to that as a, as a good way to potentially start. But again...
So you just send them like a warning letter if the, somebody like a neighbor calls on them? And then what does the city do? Say, oh, we, you know, heard you're doing XYZ, you need to, you know, not be doing that?
Yeah, so the code allows for, you know, it's really going to be, the primary goal is outreach, education. Hey, you know, when you wash your paint can, it's going into the creek. You know, there also is an ability built into this code to recover cost of remediation. So if we have to, you know, go do a cleanup effort to, you know, to undo that damage, we can pass that cost along to the, you know, the person that caused the discharge. There's also provisions to be able to suspend. And I guess we can go to the next slide, because I think that's the next slide. Suspend the connection to the storm sewer system, which gets kind of challenging. I mean, what do you do? Go put like a plug in someone's? So that's, that's built into the code, but practically speaking, it's kind of hard to do.
Yeah.
The code also gives us the ability to go, you know, onto property and inspect, you know, if, if there are discharger to the storm sewer system, we can go and, you know, see what's going on. And again, speaking of issues that were potentially controversial, that was another one that's come up in the past of, you know, we don't want to be overstepping our bounds of, you know, privacy and, you know, people's, you know, ability to have their private property be private. So again, this draft code says that staff can access a facility or a basically a property immediately in an emergency situation or with 24 hours of notice in a non-emergency situation. And I really, this is primarily intended for like an industrial, commercial discharger. Most of those sort of commercial industrial users will also have to have a storm sewer permit through the state that also builds that in. So the intent is not to, you know, go into someone's backyard and poke around necessarily. But, you know, if there's concern about that from the council, that's something that we can look at. you know, if there's concern about that from the council, that's something that we can look at adjusting as we come back to the final version here. Written warning, I mentioned cost remediation, and then there's an appeals process to the hearings examiner. You know, if people feel that they're being unfairly targeted, or having this code unfairly applied to them.
Can you speak up a little bit, Brian?
Sure, I'll make sure to talk right into it. Actually, I'm done. So, with that, you know, again, first look, so really looking for council's input feedback, so we can make some adjustments before we come back.
I thought it looked good.
Yeah.
I didn't really see anything that
I mean, I would just suggest if we were having issues with them putting up a sign, if there is any kind of way of signage as far as like, no dumping, but it doesn't sound like we're having massive issues.
It's kind of been sporadic, but this will again give us that tool. What about the car washing and the inspection? Any feedback on those? Do we want to leave it as it's drafted with the, you know, if, if possible, wash over pervious surface grass for cars, or do we want to just pull that, or any feedback there?
Pull it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I think that, well, at least in, in my neighborhood up there, there's, I don't know where people are washing their cars, but there's not a lot of them that do it in the, in the driveway. So, the, the water seems to be, or the runoff from car wash seems to be pretty minimal where I drive by, anyway.
Gravel's a good spot, too, right?
Yeah.
It filters that, right?
Exactly.
Not just, okay.
All right, anything else we should adjust as we're bringing this back for public hearing?
I don't think so.
Don't be mad if I leave my car in the yard, though.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. All right, so that brings us back to citizens' public comment. You did try, thank you. Clerk, please call up any public comments from the audience?
Al Philla.
Al Philla, 152 West 15th Street. And by the way, I noticed too that you missed Wow, it's Memorial Day. Next Monday, at 11 o'clock out at the cemetery, the mayor's going to be the keynote speaker. So it's your opportunity, you know, and also the American Legion will be handing out poppies over at the Chevron Station on Saturday morning between 9:00 and 12:00. So if you want to wear a poppy to support veterans, that's the place to be. And of course, you can always stick a little donation into the little pot we're going to have there, too. So, thank you all. Hope to see you sometime this weekend. God bless America.
Thank you, Al.
There's no many, there's not.
Oh, we got two going on.
Al Louise, 2188 East Gator Avenue. Something I thought I wanted to bring up to council was is for the last two or three years, we've done a really good job of crack sealing our roads in town. And I, we all travel, and you know what they look like now. I'd like to hopefully consider your budget for this coming year, that we look at getting started on some of the roads to get them top sealed. And maybe going forward every year, put that into your budget so we can keep the community looking like thriving community rather than a deteriorated community. So, just food for thought. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
My name is Skip Carlson. I live at 359 15 Northwest Jenny Creek Road, just north of the center here. Had a couple of random thoughts. Well, one thing I had chatted with one of the council people a couple of weeks ago, have we looked at getting a liaison with the Port of Ridgefield? Has that moved on to anybody's list? It's, it's really important. I believe, I'm of the opinion, it's extremely important that we get somebody to build a relationship there for nurturing business in the city of Old Center. Something else that, this is, I mentioned this once before. In the myriad of expenditures that we have in this city, I really would like to see, personally would like to see, and I think we could probably afford a giant screen on that wall, and something that can be read when we're trying to follow along on this stuff. It's really difficult on that little bitty screen. Big roll down screen and some hang up a deal to where it's just difficult to follow. Even that, some of it wouldn't get large enough, Al. So, I think we could afford that. The other comment, this is, this is a citizen's public comment, and this is, I'm a citizen, I'm going to make a comment. I'm remiss in doing this to a degree. You know, the planning efforts in the city are exponential. And when I see that we have, I know, I know that we, I know the city has GMA requirements. And I, I don't know if this is a correct term or not. But when we're going, when the city is going over and above the, the showers, and exceeding and going into the, the things that the city may do, it, pretty soon, you know, we have, we have ordinances, we have city codes that are of biblical terms, you know, they're, it's just, it's huge. And I, I can't help but question the necessity of going above and beyond. You know, stick with the showers, I'm all for the showers. But man, when we get to the, you know, what the city may do this, and it may do that, and it can do this, when we're, when we're, when we're delving into the maize and cans beyond the showers and wells, it gets, it gets awfully complicated. So, I'm just not a real fan of that personally. That's a personal comment. I guess I'm a citizen, and that's a comment. I realize that we have to stay in compliance. But man, we get, we, we're complicated enough as it is. So, and, and it all, it all rolls back to funding. You know, not just, not just paying for the planning, but anyway, that's, that's enough. Those are the, the big screen, at the very least, for old people. Okay, we can afford that, can't we? Come on now. All right, thanks, bye.
Thanks, Skip. Any other public comments?
Jim Irish, 1653 East Heritage Loop, the center. I was very appreciative of the fact of having the aging report. I don't need somebody to tell me I'm a year older, I can see that. But I want very much to stress that the city needs to help the senior citizens and the low-income, and the other people that need the help of the city. Not just cost money-wise, but meals on wheels. Citizens come there to sit and visit with other citizens besides having the meals. That is their social time. That is what keeps us a vibrant community, is the fact that the citizens from Woodland, citizens from Ridgefield, citizens of elder citizens can get together and share ideas. And pretty soon, they came up here and they made comments, or they go sit and talk to Brian about a new park. You know, we really need to have something there for us older people, you know, rather than swings. And we do a fantastic job of that. The city council does a fantastic job of that. And I want to thank you for your consideration and your thought process of looking out for those that need your help. Not money-wise necessarily, but hey, you know, if you get together with a group and you have hour days, we can have lots of fun with all kinds of things going on. And we do. And the American Legion, we have a fantastic group here. We support the city and support the veterans. Al Louise, you are not only a veteran, you are a senior citizen, and you're well-respected within this community. I'm not as old as he is, so I can say that. But anyway, I just want to thank you all, and don't slack off, because this group that you taught, heard about from doing all this group for the older people is well-needed in order to keep bringing in the younger families who see how they take care of everybody, not just the kids, not just the moneymakers, but all, the whole family structure. And I want to thank you very much for your time and your effort in doing that, and your staff is a fantastic staff in doing this. Thank you.
Hey, Jim, before you leave, is there like specific support that, you know, the senior citizen part of our community is looking for? Or, am I understanding, you, are you just thanking us for, or thanking the city for its participation in some of those programs?
We allow, yes, you do. We have Meals on Wheels. This community center, you're getting that done for us, aren't we, Brian?
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, the groups that we, the things that we have is the citizens are, I'm thanking you for, is the group participation. Meals on Wheels, farmers markets,
Gotcha, gotcha.
where we can bring the citizens together. It's not just for the farmers, it's for everybody to come together and talk over a fresh apple pie or something.
All right, awesome. Thank you. I appreciate you explaining that more.
Thank you, Jim. Clerk, is there any other public audience or comments from the audience?
There is not.
Any public comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, hi, this is Kimberly Goheen Elbin. I'm speaking from a PCO Republican Party meeting. That's very interesting. So I was able to actually hear exactly what was going on. However, I'd like to mention a little bit about the aging proposals, this and that. A lot of these, and I don't know about this one, but a lot of these are funneling and cycling money of hard-earned tax dollars. You know, I'm a senior citizen, I enjoy all this, but it seems like that, of course, volunteers don't get paid, but a lot of people in the government do for a lot of volunteer services. I might add, we're talking about millions and millions of dollars. And then when you mentioned the Clark County manager, Kathleen Otto, I want to tell everybody, she's unelected, and she's the one that runs this county. And so the citizens, back our forefathers, you know, asked us to stand up, I have to whisper sometimes, stand up against a government that wants to take over the citizens, have all these hard-earned tax dollars entities funded and then ruled over us. When in reality, we need to work out our hard-earned tax dollars to actually help the people themselves. Also, again, I'm against any illegal immigrants here in our nation. It has brought fentanyl, child trafficking, we already have that in our system here now, but anyway, I appreciate everybody there. Have a wonderful springtime. God is always good. And I just, I, I just want to let people know that I care about our nation. I, I love God, I serve family and, and country, and everybody take care. God bless you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Are there any public comments to be read?
There may be another caller online. There was a couple that unmuted themselves.
Okay. Any public comments from those calling in?
Yeah.
Please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. Are you there? Can you press star six to unmute yourself again, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hello, council. My name is Justine Stimmel, and I appreciate each and one of you. I've been watching all the meetings and seeing a lot of the things that are bringing, brought forth in our community, so thank you. I know it takes a lot of time to do what you do, so I appreciate that and that you're, you know, for the city and for the, for the citizens of List Center. So I just wanted to come on and just get a big shout out to Myrna Leahhoff for putting her hat in the arena here to, she's running for position four for List Center City Council, and she's a capable woman, very honest, organized. A lot of you know her and her community involvement and all the things that she's really done. She is going to make a fantastic asset to, to the board there, to the council. So, that's awesome. With that said, and also, I just want to say, like, we're having a lot of success at our school board meetings at List Center here. The, the board and our superintendent, they're awesome. They really are, they're courageous. They, they deserve our support, and they, they deserve to be thanked. So I just want to encourage people, please send an email. If you see them, say hi, you know, they really are standing up for family values and the family parental relationship between child and parent. And so with that said, we don't want any other issues to come forth, but also so thank, thankful, so thankful for that. And speaking to the agenda item tonight, that is really great news about the police report. There's not much, you know, crime in List Center, and that's fantastic, so that's worth noting. So thanks for your time tonight. Appreciate all of you, and God bless America.
Thank you, Justine. Are there any other public comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. Okay, moving on. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
There's one. I think this came from Karen Stewart from List Center United. List Center United would like to thank Liz Servini and Maria Swinger Inskeep for attending the May List Center United Town Hall. We were able to gather information, and we'll be sending out a follow-up survey to collect further data. We hope city council members will be able to participate in the survey. List Center United will be hosting their final community meeting at the, of the school year, June 8th of 2023 at 5:30 at the high school library. The topic is courageous conversations, a community conversation about LGBT+. Please join us to learn, share, and hear from a panel of some of our local LGBTQ+ advocates. If you have any questions, please let me know or reach out to listenerunited@gmail.com.
Perfect, thank you. I, I do want to let council know, if you guys are planning to attend these events, please coordinate with Maria so that we don't have a quorum. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the mayor's report. Hey, we're moving on. City offices will be closed on Monday, May 29th, observance of Memorial Day. City offices will be closed on Monday, May 29th in observance of Memorial Day. The splash pad at Holly Park opens when school is out for the summer, which is June 16th. There's spring cleanup event will be Saturday, June 3rd at the La Center High School parking lot from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Hoop Smart Clark event will be Saturday, May 27th at Holly Park from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. See the city's website for additional information. There's also a mayor's Q and A that will be Wednesday, June 7th here at the city hall from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And I do also want to invite you all out to the La Center Little League on Thursday, May 25th from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. All veterans will be served free hot dogs and will be honored. And then Al, you took my other announcement of joining us at the La Center Cemetery. So I do appreciate that. That takes us to the attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I have a couple of things to report to you on tonight. One is I know some of you use cell phones to conduct city business, which is fine. That's legal. But there's some things that you need to be aware of when you do this. So just about a week ago, 10 days ago, this was in the newspaper. Seattle pays $2.3 million to whistleblower over deleted text messages. So in this case, Seattle Mayor Jenny Durkin received a request or the city received a public records request, which included a request for text messages from the mayor and some top city officials. And there was quite a process to try and get those text messages from the mayor. And the city did not get all of them because the mayor had deleted some. And so I just want to underscore the potential financial impact that can occur to a city when we don't retain public records. And messages on your phone about city business are public records. Not only did the city have to pay $2.3 million to the plaintiffs in this case, but they spent $800,000 defending the case. So ultimate financial impact was over $3 million. In this case, part of the plaintiffs were actually public record staff from the city who were trying to get the text messages from the mayor and couldn't. And they were getting some resistance from the mayor trying to get those. So if you are using your phone to conduct city business, you should know how those text messages, voicemail messages are retained for how long? And how are you going to find them if we receive a public record request that includes requests for those records? So if you're doing this, like I say, it's legal, but it will be incumbent on you if we get a records request to conduct the search, to find any responsive records and to produce them. And so you might ask, well, how long do I need to keep these records on my folder wherever they're stored? And unfortunately, the answer is it depends. And those two words are probably cover about half the answers that I give to legal questions. It depends. The state archivist has a record retention schedule. It's 169 pages long. And the duration that you have to keep a record for depends on what subject the record relates to. So for you, I try to grab two or three of the most common. So for if you receive citizen complaints and you're responding to complaints, three years retention requirement. For communication regarding the development of ordinances and resolutions, three year record retention requirement. For general communication and correspondence, two year requirement. But after that two years, you can't just delete them. We have to turn them over to the state archivist who then determines whether or not they're going to keep the records longer. So just wanted to make you aware that you should be able to know and tell us how long these records are kept for and how you're going to find them if we get a request for them. Okay. Moving on. I sent you an email on May 18 about Senate Bill 5536 making criminal possession of controlled substances. And gave you a few bullet points on that. Essentially, the bill that was passed in the special session and signed into law by the governor makes possession of a controlled substance a gross misdemeanor. The first two offenses are, the penalty is up to six months in jail. And for subsequent offenses, it's up to a year in jail. There's prohibition on, the prohibition on giving drug paraphernalia has been eliminated by the state. And the state has what we call preempted that field of the law. So we as a city are not able to pass a law on giving away drug paraphernalia. Sale of drug paraphernalia, I think is still an offense. Law enforcement and prosecutors are offered, are encouraged to offer diversion to offenders, but it's not a requirement as it was under the previous law. So essentially that's it with this development. Speaking for the chief and I, we don't believe that it's any longer necessary for the council to entertain a ordinance on possession of drugs. Any questions about that? Any questions about the text messages?
I feel like we need a whole workshop on that.
Okay, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Bronson. Next up, council member Fox.
Hello, good evening. Glad to see so many familiar faces, some new ones. I don't have a whole lot tonight. I just want to start out by really taking time to thank our volunteers that we have in this community. La Center is so blessed to have so many wonderful community members who get together and just look out for, you know, the elderly and taking care of them and creating those spaces that, you know, it takes to run a strong, small community. So I just want to thank them so much and we just wouldn't be La Center without you. So thank you. Also, just a reminder, I did see like a young boy running today on the bridge. Just use the walking path, you know, that's why it's there. It's just so much safer on that bridge instead of having, you know, traffic on the bridge. Other than that, just going slow, lots more cars out, kids, just being mindful of that. And I would love to go to the La Center United meeting coming up, but there's also a band concert that night. So they kind of overbooked, I think with other things. So and my son's in band and he doesn't want to play next year. So this is pipe last time seeing him first chair on Trump bone. So I'm pleading with him to just continue, but we'll see. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Catherine.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of things to talk about. First of all, the bridge looks great. I really like the flags out there. I saw several of you out there the other night installing the flag. So thank you for doing that. I think it looks amazing. Several of us, city staff and the electeds, got to go to a couple of different events last week that were very informative. One of them that council member Fox and I and, and as well as Maria and Brian went to was County Parks Foundation luncheon that they had. And what that kind of brought up for me was, and Brian and I spoke a little bit about it while we were at the event, but you know, I know we've, we have that grant to do something with Holly Park.
We applied, we didn't.
Or we applied for that grant. So anyway, one of the things that, that they presented at that particular event was, I keep forgetting the little girl's name and I.
Harper.
Harper. Harper's Playground. It's a nonprofit that, that designs playgrounds for all children, so disabilities, those that are in wheelchairs and everything else. And there's a couple, there's one in Clark County that's completed. It's down at Estashort Park. I drove by there specifically a couple of times to take a look at it. They're in the process of starting, I believe, the one at, at the Marshall Center. And I really think that, that we are a really good candidate for that type of playground, especially since it's already on our radar to be, to be repaired. So I'd like to see if we can get some conversation started with that nonprofit, with the Parks Foundation and see if we can get some other funding if, if that doesn't work out. But I think it would be an amazing option for, for us and for that, for Holly Park down there. So. And then the other event that we got to go to was the Chamber of Commerce's, the Vancouver Chamber of Commerce Legislative Update. And every state representative from southwest Washington, but one was there along with all of the senators. And it was really reassuring to hear them going into this special session with their opinions and what they had been discussing. And, you know, they didn't get what they wanted, but I do think that, that the result of this session was much better than what I had expected. So if you happen to reach out to them, give them, give them your thanks because they really are working hard for us, both sides of the aisle. So. Other than that, I think that's, that's it. I'm going to try to get to the event tomorrow night that the mayor had mentioned and thanks for coming.
Thank you. Council member Boyle.
Good evening, everyone. I was just kind of thinking about this. I really didn't have much to say before, but I just kind of thought it'd be good to bring up. I think the word transparency has been brought up many times over the last few years, we'll just say. And I think, you know, I've been on council for one year and five months and 25 days. And I would, at this point in time, and I just want to say thanks to our, to our new appointed mayor for what he's doing behind the scenes right now and the work that's getting done. And yeah, it's, it's great. He's really brought us all in to be involved in a lot of the things that are pertinent to our city and trying to get things accomplished that, you know, we've all had the ideas behind and, you know, we have all these wants that we want to see done for our city. And I do feel like for the first time since being on council that we're actually making good progress and getting those things done. Yeah, it's, it's kind of a fun and exciting time to be on council. And so, yeah, I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update. I'm sure you'll be a part of it. And yeah, I just want to say thanks to Tom.
Thank you. I don't need to thank you.
Okay. Well, now no thanks to Tom.
All right. That brings us to staff reports. And actually I see Peter, you're in the audience. Did you want to say anything about the schools or are you good for till next meeting?
So that it said in the mic, it said that there is a blood drive at the same time as the recycling event on that Saturday.
Do you need, do you need, do you need help? Do you guys need help from us at all to be there? I mean, obviously, yeah, we're kind of be there, right?
Please, let's see her after the, after the meeting and we can discuss that. Yeah, definitely. All right, moving on. Staff reports. Next up is the police staff report. Chief Richardson, will you present the staff report?
I will, Mayor. Thank you and thank you, council and community members. This is the report for the month of April, 2023. We had nine reported crimes in April, three vandalisms, one no contact order violation, one theft from a building, one theft from a vehicle, which I feel is probably underreported. I read all the call histories for that particular day and there were a couple of calls where people mentioned that there were other cars, cars that they could see with the doors open, but other people didn't call in and report them. Sometimes that happens because they go through the car, they don't take anything or a citizen goes through and can't find anything that's been stolen, or maybe they just took the change out of the ashtray and they don't feel it's worth reporting. But please, anytime you get victimized by somebody, we would be more than happy to come out and take a report. And if there's suspect information, we'd be more than happy to follow up. And if we can make an arrest, we'd be more than happy to do that on your behalf. So just that's one larceny, one identity theft and one stolen property. And I'm just going to take, go to page two because I know, I don't want to take up everybody's time. It's a beautiful evening tonight. But there's a list of crime offenses from April, 2023. I just wanted to point a couple of them out. The second one on that list is case number 2356. And that was an unusual call. That was a call up on Paradise Park Road where there were two suspicious vehicles up there. And when the officer got there, it was working overtime in our city that particular day. He ran the first car's plate, came back stolen. The driver got out of the car, jumped in the, the other car that was there in the passenger side, went up to that car and luckily the driver of that particular car didn't want anything to do with the driver that jumped in his car. And so there's kind of a run around the car trying to get the guy because he gets back out, gets back in the stolen car and drives away. And that's a classic example that under the new law, we can't pursue them even under the new pursuit law. So that person left and so we, we took a case number and a report, but unfortunately we weren't able to recover the car ourselves or make an arrest in that case. So those are things that they do happen in our city as they do all over the place. And that's kind of the reason why I think law enforcement is still a little frustrated and so victims, I think of people getting their cars stolen. That sometimes you hear the police aren't doing anything. Well, we're kind of prohibited from chasing people. So that's something that I just wanted to bring about. Another case that I just want to read to you really briefly is the 23-63. This was a case where somebody went onto the school grounds and dumped roofing material. And as they were driving around the barrier, they caused landscaping damage. The officer took the initial report and then this month we actually got the video from the school. It was outstanding. You see video all the time that people play on YouTube of crimes and the video is really bad. School district's got an outstanding video system. We were able to get the license plate, call the owner, identified an employee that was, that the, this owner paid him to drop the material off at a dump. Well, you didn't do that. And so we actually were able to identify the suspect and we've referred the case to the prosecutor. So that's again, good work by the officer, good work by the school district. And why, if you're going to invest in video cameras, it's always good to get ones that you can actually see people on. So, and then that's really it as far as crimes. If anybody ever has any information or any questions, I'm going to cover one other thing, but please feel free to call me or email me. If I can share the information with you, I'd be more than happy to. We don't have any secrets. Everything is published either in this report or there's a mapping system that you can get a link to on our city website. You can actually look at what crimes are going on in the city of La Center as well as all over the county. I got another question that somebody asked me is why is the drug arrest missing from April 14th? The one that was in the paper? And that's simply because that case, although we were aware of the warrant service in our community, that was a case, it was worked with Clark County Sheriff's Department and Vancouver PD. And they came in to serve a, this arrest warrant at, search warrant at this house that happened to be the suspect's girlfriend's house, but he was living there. And so that's why it's not on my list because I only report the crimes that we were taking the case. It's an investigation where we're going to actually report the case to the state. And in this particular case, this will either get reported to the state either by Clark County Sheriff's or Vancouver. But in the other, other side of that coin is that, hey, that shows a good cooperation that we have in this county. And anytime you can get drugs or guns off the street, that's a good thing. And so I think that's, I just want you to be aware of that. And if you see any suspicious activity, people coming and going from your neighbor's houses late at night, maybe somebody, you know, carrying things in and out of a house, give us a call. And what we generally do when I get cases like that, I turn them over to, send them over to the task force and let somebody else give, have that information because they might know more about what's going on than, than we would in the city. So I hope that answers the question regarding the drug house and that thing that was going on on April 14th. I'd like to move on because I know people are always interested on what's the status of the police department and our staffing. We are still utilizing officers from the deputies from the sheriff's department, Washougal and Ridgefield to fill overtime slots in our city. You will see them out there. They're making car stops, they're making arrests, they're running tickets. So don't be alarmed if you get a ticket from Washougal Police Department or the Ridgefield Police Department. They're authorized to write tickets in our city, just like they would have been a La Center officer. Like anything else in our community, generally they've tried to give warnings more than write a lot of tickets. But occasionally, depending what the violation is or how fast you're going or where you're driving too fast, like a school zone, you may end up with a citation. And obviously you have the right to go to court and contest that. With that being said, we are in negotiations with River, Ridgefield PD and the sheriff's department. Ridgefield PD, we've been in negotiations for quite a long time. We were waiting for a consultant to come back from a company called B E R K that did a report for the city of Ridgefield, trying to analyze whether it was good or not for the city of Ridgefield to provide policing services to the city of La Center under contract. I've, we've had the opportunity to look at the draft report and we made some, gave some input on that. That draft report is going to their city council tomorrow at 5:30 at a workshop where it will be presented. It's workshops open to the public and you can also get online and watch it. So that gives the, the city of Ridgefield's council their first view of this, these recommendations from the study. After they do that with the city of Ridgefield, our intent is for them to come into the, into, depending on what their council decides, because ultimately their council has to approve any contract. They will come into the, we're looking at June for them to come in, do the same exact workshop for our city council. So our city council can ask questions regarding this contract and the pros and cons of contracting out for services. In this particular contract, we're contracting out or asking for 24/7 coverage, 365 days a year. And then it would be up to the city of Ridgefield to provide that after they have a period of time ramp up and hire six additional police officers. Another positive with this particular contract is it would provide four supervisors, so almost 24/7 supervisory coverage, which we've never had, but you actually kind of need it now. And today's environment nowadays, police supervisors have to go to use of force incidents and investigate them. They have to okay pursuits. So there's a lot of demands that happen even two or three o'clock in the morning where you have a generally a police officer out there with little experience because that's where the new guys end up. And you have a supervisor that needs to be out there supervising. So and then the other thing I believe is in 2025, is it would provide a detective's position that we would share, that would do additional follow up investigation, which is something we've never had. So that's just a kind of an overview of what that contract is like, but you're free to listen in tomorrow. I'm sure once the report is released to the council that it'll be a public report that you can get online. So with that, we're also having conversations with the Clark County Sheriff's Department again. They are doing a lot of recruitment. I believe they have at least 15 deputies that are waiting to get into the academy. So they're like everybody else, everybody, there's not enough academy slots and everybody's storing these bodies, waiting for the academy. I met with the sheriff and the undersheriff yesterday. We had a good discussion and we're moving forward with looking at a framework for them. And my intent is to come with two proposals, at least. We're working on a third one, perhaps two proposals, three proposals to the council that they can ask questions. And then ultimately it's the city council that makes the direction to pick whichever contract they want and pay whatever money they, they, they think is necessary to have this police department. So that's where we are right now. If anybody has any questions, I'd like to ask more or, but we're moving. This is the farthest we've gotten. I've been involved in this and this temporary interim job for three years almost. And we're moving as fast as we can. Like I told everybody, when we first started this, I was, remember sitting in the city council meeting, I think it was via Skype at that time or, and telling people that this was a long drawn out process. And it could be very painful and very long because police departments, you know, they're very important in our communities and we love our police officers. But we also have to kind of balance out what we can afford because if we can, if we spend every dime on our police department, then we can't spend money on parks and roads and those kinds of things. So we have to find that balance. So that's what we're looking for right now is balance. And we couldn't do that without the mayor and the council and the other people in Ridgefield and the sheriff's department and their staff. So that's kind of where we are. If anybody has any other questions beyond this, I'd be more than happy to answer them after the meeting or you can sit down and meet with me. Council, you have any questions?
Thank you. All right. Thank you, chief. Next up, administrative services staff report. Ms. Maria Swinger Inskeep will present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight I bring you my May staff report. The April sales tax disbursement was $49,732 compared to 44.8 last year. We had a strong month in card room revenue with just over $139,000. And then staff stayed busy with trainings this month. I attended the Labor Relations Institute. Riley and I attended the GFOA conference this week. And then as a council member Casper mentioned, we have attended some luncheons and breakfast. I think we like to eat around here. We are seeking one citizen for the budget advisory committee. Applications are available on the website and are due June 5th. Citizens must live within the city limits and be a registered voter. The role of the BAC is to serve in an advisory capacity to assist in development of an annual budget. They also get feedback on budget requests and on the top priorities of the city. And the BAC advises council on rate increases. Also, the committee is asked to provide feedback on maintaining a balance between keeping fees for services affordable and providing the resources needed, needed to continue to maintain and improve the level of services for city programs. The committee meets up to four times a year and it, please reach out to me if any citizens have questions on that. And thank you. Are there any questions?
I do want to encourage people that want to volunteer for this committee. It is important to the city and we would like to have some new, new faces in there. So please see Maria if you're interested. All right, no questions to Maria? Thanks, Maria. That brings us to unfinished business. Council, is there any unfinished business?
Don't think so.
How about new business?
Nothing to bring up?
All right. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So move.
Take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? abstaining? Motion granted or motion passed? Thank you.